Good evening, everyone. This is the October 25th Board of Selectmen, also acting as Wage and Personnel Board Meeting in Lakeville. Is anyone recording the meeting other than Lake Cam? Okay. Agenda item number one, in accordance with provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, the October 25th, 2021 Public Meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash Lake Cam. And you shouldn't need a Facebook account to view the meeting. The meeting will also be recorded by Lake Cam and available to be viewed later at a later date at www.lakecam.tv backslash. So, right at 6:30, we're going to jump into article, uh, item number two, which is the warrant review for special town meeting on November 8th. So, we all know that we have a special town meeting on November 8th. I know we have it in the announcement sections, but as long as we're here right now, I'm just going to mention that anyone who is not registered to vote and would like to vote needs to regi- at that special town meeting, needs to register by Friday, October 29th, 8 o'clock PM. That's this Friday, correct, Lo? Lillian Drain is our Town Clerk. So, if you are, for some reason, no, you're not on the voter list, either you just turned 18 or for some reason moved to town, you have until this week, Friday, to register to vote. Anyone who is registered to vote can attend town meeting and your vote, your vote counts. All right. So, the special town meeting is scheduled for November 8th at 7:00 PM. And the warrant has been posted. It's already been approved, posted, and this is the warrant review. Tonight with us, we have the Finance Committee, who needs to make recommendations on each warrant article. Because it's been, the packet was posted and it's actually been posted. I think we can rave the reading of every individual article. So, if we can all just follow along, we can just start with Article One, so.
Madam Chair.
Do you want to open your meeting?
Yes, please, thank you. Yeah. So, as Chairman of the Lakeville Finance Committee, Darren Beals, I'd like to call all the Finance Committee meetings in order at 6:33. And let's see who's here, Katie? DeRocher? Brian Day?
Present.
Adam Levine, I'm sorry, Adam Levine. Adam Lynch? I don't know where that came from. Adam Lynch? And I don't see Larry, so we have a quorum, so we can proceed.
Okay. Um, so, do you all have copies in front of you? Okay. Um, so, Article One is some financial transfers. Uh, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $4,361.87 from free cash, 155 from park retained earnings to pay the following bills. That's Article One, proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Do I hear a motion to approve Article One?
I'll move.
I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Finance Committee recommends that Article One is approved.
Okay.
To vote on it?
Yeah. Thank you, Katie?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Adam?
Hi.
And Darren, I.
Okay. Article Two is another financial article to see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of $87,000 and transfer from septic loan fund the sum of $15,000 to supplement the appropriations stated below, as were previously voted in Article One of the May 10th, 2021 Annual Town Meeting. So, I guess, uh, as long as we don't have to read the rest, you can do your thing, Darren.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve Article Two?
I'll move.
Motion to approve. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Two quick questions, if nobody else has anything. Madam Chair, I assume the line item number one, that'll be taken care of in next year's fiscal budget. So, that'll be rolled in?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, yeah, Ari, do you want to handle that one?
I'll, that, so that, that, um, as you recall, Brian, the Board, um, included a placeholder in the Selectmen's Budget for Staff Support and Planner. They're both, they're both knew that, we both knew they were underfunded. So, um, this, um, yeah, provides the bridge needed to be able to fund both the assistance to the Town Administrator and the Town Planner.
Okay, great, good. So FY23, we'll just increase those lines as necessary.
Hmm.
And then my, my second question, if I may, was what, what would the balance of the septic loan program be after the transfer? And I know it's generally a relatively small account, but do we anticipate any, any needs from that account the rest of this year?
Um, second answer is no, first answer, I'm not sure. I'll have to get back to you with that one.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote, Katie?
Hi.
Brian?
Hi.
Adam?
Hi.
And Darren, I. So, the Finance Committee unanimously approves, uh, recommends Article Number Two.
All right. Article Number Three, to see if the town will vote to rescind the borrowing authority for $95,163, which constitutes the balance that is not going to be borrowed for the police station construction, Article Nine of the June 12th, 2017 Annual Town Meeting, or take any other rec- relative, uh, any other action relative thereto, also proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve Article Three?
I'll move.
Second?
Any discussion?
Any questions?
Questions, discussions?
Is this the end of the, the police station now?
Yes.
Pretty much, yep. Yep. Long time coming, but this is it.
Okay. Uh, let's vote. Uh, Katie?
Hi.
Brian?
Day, I.
Adam?
Hi.
And Darren, I. So, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approving Article Three.
Okay, thank you. Um, so Article Four is kind of lengthy. But to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $90,000 or any other sum to be expended under the direction of Board of Selectmen to pay the costs of developing a feasibility study and schematic design for the purpose of studying options for repairs, replacements, and/or additions to the Assawamset Elementary School building. So, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna let Ari do some explaining on this one for us.
A little bit of explaining. Um, so, this is a feasibility study for the Windows and Doors Project at Assawamset School. Um, it is on the agenda for MSBA. They are meeting tomorrow, I believe. And, um, it, we have every under, we have every indication that they'll, that the MSBA Board will approve the project. Um, if by some bizarre chance they don't approve the project, then we'll have to pull back this, this article. We won't bring it to a town meeting, we won't have a town meeting vote on it. But, so, for now, it continues, you should consider a contingent on that, on, on the MSBA action. Um, this would be the first step in that project. There'll be a larger appropriation needed to be able to do the, uh, do the actual work. This is just the, the, uh, the town share of the feasibility study. Um, and one other thing, Carol Lees and I were exchanging some emails today, uh, although, even though, um, this was the language that MSBA prescribes, and I had it reviewed by Town Council, we had a little bit of a curve at the very end there, where MSBA Legal came in with a couple, with a, with, with one small change that they suggested. Kara's checking on whether it's, um, Kara, have you heard back from MSBA yet? She's still, still muted.
Hi, sorry. Um, I have not, um, but I did ask.
All right, that's fine, yeah. Uh, and she, the, the, the only change that they'd asked for was, um, near the end, uh, next to last line of the, of the, of the article, replace feasibility study agreement with project financing agreement, because that's the, the terminology that MSBA uses now. Very, you know, not, not particularly significant change. So, um, that, that's, that, that, we may need to make that, that change from the floor, Madam Chair, if that, if.
Okay. Okay, so, I mean, we can't change it now. Um, we have to approve it the way it is.
Right.
Well, the Finance Committee has to, um, give its support or not the way it is. So, if we do find out, um, that we need to make that change, we can make that change on town floor.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any questions on this? I know we didn't read the whole article. We can, if someone wants more clarity. I don't know if anyone on the Finance Committee has questions about this. Superintendent is here with us.
I, I do, Leah.
Okay.
Are we going out to borrow?
For the $90,000?
Yes.
Most likely not. I mean, the appropriation has to be, the, the, the language of the appropriation requires it to be done as a loan order in the appropriation, because it's going to be a capital projects fund. But, but the, the, um, we can fund it any way we want to. Um, most likely, we'll just assign free cash to it, because it is not that much money.
Okay.
Just for my reporting.
Yep.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Look, go ahead, somebody else started to speak.
No, go ahead, Brian.
I, I was just gonna ask if we have any initial ideas, what a project like this for a building of Assawamset size may cost? And what percentage MDSA would be reimbursing?
Um, yeah, the, the, the project could be as much as a couple million dollars, two and a half, even two and a half million dollars. And MS, and, um, it'll be, um, 70, 30, I believe. So, um, so we'd be on the hook for half a million or so.
All right, thank you.
And.
I'm sorry, yes, Madam Chair, I had a question. Can you quick, um, just for the viewers, clarify what it, what you mean by, or any other sum? It says 90,000 or any other sum.
Right in the first line.
Yeah, so that's, that's the language MSBA requires us to use. And basically, it's, um, it's their way of saying that if they were to award us a different number than that, that we, that, under this feasibility study, that we, we, that, that the town needs to make, making commitments to go to that. It, it's kind of a meaningless distinction at this point, because 90,000 is the number on that, that is, is, is the number assigned, associated with the total. Kara, what's the total feasibility study cost?
So, the estimate was $90,000, um, when I discussed it with the MSBA. $15,000 for the owner's project manager and $75,000 for a designer.
And our funding would be how much?
Um, so, the 90,000 is the total appropriation. So, depending on, right, if we have the invitation. So, the percentage that they would cover based on, on the last time MSBA released the information was 53.53% of coverage as a reimbursement rate.
So, about 50,000 or so would be on the hook for.
Correct.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that for everyone.
I guess, if I may, a follow-up to Darren's question, if, if we now have those solid numbers, that 90,000, does that, or any sum need to remain in there, or could that be another change from the floor?
Um, I think we have to run that by MSBA. Okay. It's just, it's just.
You've read kind of blank check-ish, yeah?
Yeah, that, that's MSBA for you. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't really have any other way to put it, Brian. I've, I've gone through this frustration with them, my other gig as well. They, um, they, they prescribe language that they will require us to have. And if we don't have the language exactly the way they want it, then they will tell us to get it right and come back to us. Um, in, in this case, uh, they, I think, I think the intention here is to kind of take into account if there's a potential overage or an underage or, or whatever, so that, um, so that, so that this project, you know, resolves itself, one way or the other. Um, you know, I, I, it, I, I don't think that, in my experience, MSBA is fairly consistent about sticking to that number as best they can. But, um, I have had, you know, I have been involved in experiences where, you know, the number is up a little bit lower, usually not higher, um, lower. And, and, you know, in that case, this language would allow it to just close out, as opposed to, you know, to precision like we did before with the, uh, we do, like the previous article. So, um, you know, it, that, that, that's just the nature of the, of the way, of the way MSBA, you know, requires the language.
Madam Chair.
Yep. Yep.
Um, for Brian, uh, Brian, we're assuming that we're gonna hear from the SBA sometime this week, you know, they approved the project or they didn't. And, um, the motion must be a specific dollar amount, and right now, it's $90,000, so, just so you know.
Yeah, I don't think anybody has any problem with the 90,000 language. It's the follow-up language, which is kind of wishy-washy.
Yeah. The motion is gonna be, the motion is gonna be very specific, so. A dollar amount.
Um, Mr. Madeiras, do you, Superintendent of Schools, do you have any comments you'd like to offer?
No, Ari's been very helpful in, in working, uh, from a town perspective, working with Kara. And obviously, our Director of Facilities is there too. It's a window and door project, long overdue. Uh, just to clarify, the MSBA vote in action is actually Wednesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Okay.
So, it's a Wednesday morning, we'll be taking part. And so, obviously, your action tonight in support is contingent upon that action. It is on the agenda, and we're expecting approval. And so, we'll certainly know, um, you know, at town meeting, exactly where we stand as it relates to MSBA. And we're gonna be present to answer that. I'd be happy to answer, focusing on windows and doors.
Okay.
So, um, Kara, you can tell me whether you think this is gonna be a problem. What we could do to address Brian's concern is, um, once MSBA makes the award, um, you know, determine whether it's okay to drop the any other amount piece, and then just stick with the, and, and, so, we're gonna have, if we have an amendment to do to the, on the floor anyway, we could do that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, when we, are we making a recommendation tonight based on the contingency? Is that implied that it's all determined if it gets approved or not?
Yeah, I mean, my, I, I think the Board's intentional, actually, I want to speak for the Board, but I, I, I think.
Yeah, Darren, what we were doing was, if this doesn't get approved by them this week, then we pretty much just table the, uh, someone makes a motion to table the article indefinitely, or, because we can't do this without them, so.
And Leah, if I may, so, um, the Town Administrator and the Board, Brian, to respond, if, if we didn't take this action prior and take advantage of the special town meeting, we potentially lose a window of time, once it's voted on at the October meeting. So, it was, uh, although it was a little bit ahead, if we lose this special town meeting, then we, then we lose the window of timeframe to get this addressed. So, that was the intent.
That's the other piece, is that MSBA requires that it be, um, that we adopt the order within 60 days of the, of the MS, of the Board Meeting.
Right.
Which is all good. I think this is great conversation to have a head of town meeting, so that if this language does come up, we've all got an idea of why it's that way.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, any other questions, comments from anybody? Lorraine, you good? You can nod.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, hearing none. Um, do I have, do I hear a motion to approve Article Four?
I'll move.
Second?
Okay, any additional conversations or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, Katie?
Hi.
Brian?
Day, I.
Adam?
I.
And Darren, I. Uh, so, the Finance Committee unanimously, um, recommends approval of Article Four.
Thank you, folks, for your continued support. I'll keep you updated, Ari.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Good night. Um, okay, so, the next article is being proposed by Lillian Drain, who's our Town Clerk. Article Five, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 110A, to allow the Office of the Town Clerk to remain closed on Saturdays and to treat Saturday as a legal holiday for the purposes of calculating the timeframe for filing or taking other action required by law, or take any other action relative thereto. So, um, this isn't a financial, um, article, but the Finance Committee still needs to weigh in. And I don't know if you want to discuss that with the FinCom, Darren, what your options are.
Sure, so, um, we can approve, uh, I'm sorry, we can recommend it, or we can say we have no recommendation. Is there any thoughts from the Finance Committee? On these non-financial matters?
Um, my only question is, would it have any financial impact if she had to be open on Saturdays at all? Would that end up being an overtime thing or anything?
No, because that would be the one in the office.
Okay.
Well, I mean, one quick question on the article, I mean, where clerk is already closed on Saturdays. Is this something that has to be renewed every now and then? Is this a new, um, statute that we adopted?
No, the statute has to do with us treating Saturdays as a holiday. So, in case there was any filing deadlines and it happened to fall on a Saturday, I'm not, I'm not obligated to stay open on a Saturday for that. I would treat as Monday as the filing date.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay. Um, do I hear a motion to approve Article Five?
I'll move.
Second? Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. And, uh, any other discussion, questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote, Katie?
Hi.
Brian?
Day, I.
Adam?
I.
And Darren, I. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends to approve Article Five.
Okay. Um, arti- thank you. Article Six is, um, to see if the town will vote to amend Lakeville, also proposed by the Town Clerk, I'm sorry, to see if the town will vote to amend Lakeville General Bylaws, Chapter Two, by adding the following new Section 18 Articles Seeking Special Legislation to provide as follows. To enable adequate time for review, no article appearing on a warrant for an annual or special town meeting requesting a petition to the General Court to enact special legislation shall be in order for consideration by town meeting unless the text of the special legislation sought is included as part of the article or as an appendix to the warrant, or is on file with the Town Clerk at least 14 days prior to the date of special town meeting and seven days prior to the date of an annual town meeting at which it will be considered or take any other action relative thereto. Um, I don't want to speak for Lillian, but the reason we did this is because sometimes when folks present their petition articles, they don't give us the language until just before the town meeting, uh, or special town meeting. And we, people are asking us what the legislation is, and we don't even have it. So, this would correct, this would mean that anyone presenting anything, even by petition, would have to get this to us within the seven days for annual town meeting, 14 days before a special town meeting. If you have any other questions? Um, Lil is here.
Yeah, that, that sounds reasonable to me. So, no questions, so I guess, do I hear a motion to approve Article Six?
I'll move.
Second?
Second, second.
Okay, vote. Uh, Katie?
Hi.
Brian?
Day, I.
Adam?
I.
And Darren, I. The Finance Committee unanimously votes to recommend approval of Article Six.
Okay. Um, thank you. Um, so, Article Seven has to do with the Community Preservation Act. It's broken up into two different, articles, because it's something that's already in our bylaws. So, we had to change that as part of this process. So, Article Seven is to see if the town of Lakeville will, will vote to accept Sections Three to Seven, inclusive of Chapter 44B of the General Laws of Massachusetts, also known as Community Preservation Act, and beginning in fiscal year 2023 to assess a 1% surcharge on real property for the purposes permitted by said act, which include enabling the town to, one, acquire, create, and preserve open space, which includes lands for parks, recreational uses, conservation areas, and the protection of drinking water supplies; two, create and rehabilitate local parks, playgrounds, and athletic fields; three, acquire, preserve, rehabilitate, and restore historic buildings and resources; and four, create and preserve affordable housing; and further, to adopt the following exemptions from the surcharge: A, property owned and occupied as a domicile by a person who qualifies for low-income housing or low or moderate income senior housing in the town of Lakeville as designed, as defined in Section Two of said act; B, $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of residential property; and C, $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of Class III commercial property and Class IV industrial property as defined in General Law, Chapter 59, Section 2A. A taxpayer receiving a regular property tax abatement or exemption will also receive a prorata reduction in the surcharge or take any other action relative thereto. So, the CPA folks, the folks that are trying to get this, um, passed, they brought it to the Selectmen, so that we could put it at our next, um, either special town meeting or town meeting, as opposed to doing it by petition. So, um, we didn't have to call a special town meeting for this. So, we're, you know, it's great that the timing worked out, that it can be at the special town meeting. Um, I don't know if anyone has any questions about that before you discuss. Um, we can, I know we have a couple, Michelle's here, from, Michelle McKegern is here from, um, the Community Preservation folks, if anyone has questions. Um, so, can you clarify, is the 1% on the assessed value, or is it 1% of the taxes? Michelle, can you take that one?
It is the 1% of the tax rate. So, uh, it was calculated to be about $38 per year for the average valued home in Lakeville. And that was from the Town Assessors' Office.
Anyone else?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yep.
Um, so, thank you, Katie, for asking that. I had a similar comment. I had a number of folks, um, reach out to me individually. They're quite concerned, because some of the, the texts going around said a 1% surcharge on real, the value of the real property, which you could, without details or explanations given, you would think, okay, if I owned a $400,000 home, that's $4,000, since it's the value of real property. I started looking at some of the other towns that have adopted CPA. Lancaster had one that I really did like, because it is a little clearer in their article, where they actually say, um, you know, to determine the amount of, to determine the amount of such surcharge on real property as a percentage of the annual real tax levy against real property, which I think helps spell it out a bit clearer, so there's no question that this is a, a surcharge on top of what would be your normal real estate taxes, obviously minus the $100,000 exemption here. Um, so, I just hope nobody at this point is confused, any of the residents, this is not thousands of dollars per year on your home. It is a percentage on your real estate tax value. Please correct, that is wrong.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yep.
So, Brian, you made a great point, and, um, with passing of the flyers, we have been able to, for the people that we have meet, we do have another sheet to kind of go along with it, because, because of that clarification part of it. So, um, you know, unfortunately, certain things can, can get left out, but we did have that chart as well. So, hopefully, anyone, um, with questions, you know, will reach out and get that answer.
Michelle, can you give us the best way to get ahold of the CPA folks right now? I mean, I thought you had a website?
Um, we didn't end up going with the website. Uh, we do have the email, the lakevillecpa@gmail.com, and there is a Facebook page as well.
Just under Lake. Just under Lakeville Community Preservation Act or?
Yes, Lakeville Community Preservation Act on Facebook. You got to search.
Facebook, okay. And if folks have more questions, but I know that you're gonna come to town meeting with a lot of these answers, but maybe you could pool up some of the questions that people have been asking you in case someone else asks them the same ones at town meeting, that would be great.
And I, you know, there's no, no set question, I guess, that we've been getting over and over again, but we do have those handles. Maybe that's a good idea to bring a stack of those with us that, that evening.
And, yeah, yeah, no, I was gonna say, just so everyone knows that this is a vote to get it on at town meeting. This is a vote to get this on the ballot. It has to pass at town meeting. And then if it passes at special town meeting on November eighth, it will go on to the ballot for the spring election. And then it has to pass there. Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that, Madam Chair, because I think that's an important distinction here.
Yep, Rich, do?
Yeah, Madam Chair, is somebody from the CPA Committee or whatever they're called gonna give an overview of the CPA? At town meeting?
Yep. Michelle, were you gonna plan on doing that?
Well, it's up to you. What do you, what do you want us to do? I was hoping we would have a video. We don't have a video yet, but I do have the slideshow. Is that, is there something specific or some sort of presentation you were hoping to see?
I would say, I'm sorry, Rich, I would say just to sort of clarify that point so that people that may be coming to town meeting for something else didn't even hear about this. They may not know that it's not thousands. So maybe you could just put up some slides that do the math for us.
Okay, so maybe a shortened version of what I presented to you all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, any other selectmen want to weigh in on that? Or Ari? Okay. All right, so that is Article seven. So I'll give that to you, Darren.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Any other questions before we make a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I just want to commend the CPA folks, I think regardless of the outcome as a town meeting. It's been pretty amazing seeing them all over town at different events, the signs everywhere. You've definitely done a real great kind of grassroots effort to get the word out there. So you should definitely be proud of yourselves and all the work that you have gotten out.
Okay, do I hear, do I hear a motion, a motion to approve Article seven? I move. Second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote, Katie?
Hi.
Brian?
Hey, I.
Adam?
I.
Darren, I, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article seven.
Okay, so Article eight also has to do with the Community Preservation Committee bylaw. So once the article is approved and put in the bylaws, then a Community Preservation Committee is organized. So we need to sort of update the language that's in our current bylaws. So Article eight, to see if the town will vote to reaffirm the vote at the June thirteenth, two thousand and five Annual Town Meeting to adopt the town's Community Preservation Committee bylaw as published on the town's website and on file at the office of the town clerk and by amending Section six of said bylaw by striking its text and replacing it with the following or take any other action relative thereto. So it just basically says, Section six effective date is the current text. And then Section six, provided that the Community Preservation Act is accepted by the voters at the two thousand and six Annual Town Election, this bylaw shall take effect upon approval by the Attorney General of the Commonwealth and after all requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section thirty-two have been met, and the change will be this bylaw shall take effect upon the town's acceptance of the Community Preservation Act. And it removes that two thousand and six Annual Town Election. And it just says, in accordance with the procedures set forth in Chapter forty-four B of the General Laws and after all requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section thirty-two have been met. So that just has to work, deal with updating that language that's already in our bylaws. So this is not a financial article.
Clearly, yes. Any discussion, comments, questions from the Finance Committee? No, okay, do I hear a motion to approve Article eight? Second, okay, vote, Katie?
Hi.
Brian?
Hey, I.
Adam?
I.
And Darren, I, the Finance Committee unanimously approve, sorry, Finance Committee unanimously recommends the approval of Article eight.
Okay, thank you. Article nine, yep.
Sorry, I just wanted to just let you know on that Article eight, after the fact, unfortunately, we got some information from the Coalition who helps the towns bring CPA into the town. And there are some portions of the current CPC language that is outdated. And since it was too late to address it for fall town meeting, we will, if CPA is adopted, we will probably need to bring it back in spring for the town meeting to address those items. And because as it exists, there's also the Housing Authority member as well. So we will have to address that at a later date.
Okay, and that will happen if it passes November, then it gets on the ballot, which is April. And then town meeting is usually at some point mid, mid-March-ish. We can address that other.
We may.
Mid-May, sorry, May. But doing the math, we'll, we'll have to figure that out.
Yeah, and I mean, we have it ready. We do have the language ready, so.
Okay, okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so Article nine, to see if the town will vote to amend the bylaws of the town of Lakeville to change the title of the Board of Selectmen to select word as follows or take any other action relative thereto. That's pretty self-explanatory. I don't know, again, not a financial article, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, any discussion?
It'll be considered just a clerical error, but in number one, it says tile instead of title. If we need to amend that or if they'll just love that fly.
Okay.
Yeah, just never noticed that before.
Yep, I didn't notice that either. We'll have to see.
Let me verify this advertised that way, not just, you know, produced in this document.
Yep, okay, thank you, Mr. Day.
Do I hear a motion to approve Article nine?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, vote, Katie?
Hi.
Brian?
Hey, I.
Adam?
I.
Darren, I, Finance Committee unanimously recommends to approve Article nine.
Okay, thank you. Article ten was a recommendation received by, and being proposed by the Council on Aging. So they want to change their makeup from, they, they can, they currently have eleven members and one alternate, and they want to change it to nine members and two alternates. I, Ari, do you want to speak to this? Because I don't think Kelly's with us. I thought she was gonna be here, but.
She couldn't make it in. I told her I didn't know she needed to be, that's my fault.
Okay, no, no, that's fine. But if we can at least be, be able to answer why the council, I know they voted this themselves, I believe, the actual members that make up the Council of Aging.
The Council's told us that they've had an attendant, they've had a membership and attendance issue, especially during the past year or so. So this is meant to find a way to get them a little, a little more secure in terms of having a better, decent inventory of alternates and a manageable number, yeah.
Okay, so I'll give that to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, any conversation, discussion? Okay, do I hear, do I hear a motion to approve Article ten?
Second?
Okay, Katie?
Hi.
Brian?
Hey, I.
Adam?
I.
And Darren, I, so the Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval of Article ten.
Okay. So Article eleven, so this has to do with the Marijuana Overlay District. So to see if the town will vote to amend the Lakeville Zoning Bylaw, Section seven-point-four-point-six Marijuana Uses-Adult Use Marijuana Establishments and Marijuana Retailers and Registered Marijuana Dispensaries, SPGA, Zoning Board of Appeals, Marijuana Overlay District Subsection A, by adding the following shown in underline below or take any other action relative thereto. So there will be a map that, didn't we say that, Ari, that there'll be a map provided so that everyone will be able to see exactly?
Yes, I have the map, so yeah, yeah, yeah. There's no, no change to the district at all, that was nothing. This is strictly a clarification suggested by the AG's office.
Yep. Give that to you.
Thank you, any discussion or questions, Finance Committee?
I have one quick question.
Mr. Day?
It may be unrelated, but, and I haven't kept up to date with the laws. I apologize for partial ignorance here. But do we need to include any of the delivery services as all marijuana uses? Or is that being handled separately?
It's retailers, dispensaries. Establishments, retailers, dispensaries all fall, I believe, all fall into the same category. The, the, I don't know if, I'm not certain, Brian, whether retail establishments, yeah, they would fall under this, yeah, yeah.
So are you asking, Brian, if delivery is affected by this, where they can go?
Right, because there is, if I remember correctly, there's two types of delivery licenses that can be held. And I'm not gonna be able to gracefully explain both of them right now. But I believe one of them was essentially where they could warehouse product and then distribute it. So I didn't know if that would be covered by, if they are considered retail or under a different classification.
I'm not sure the answer to that.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that either. I'm sorry, we can find out.
That's fine, this question.
Okay. I would imagine that delivery to and from the actual facilities would be.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think the overlay district restricts where you can, you know, deliver to. It strictly has to do with where the business could be signed.
Anything else, Mr. Day? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve Article eleven?
I move.
Second?
Okay, let's vote, Katie?
Hi.
Brian?
Hey, I.
Adam?
I.
And Darren, I, so the Finance Committee unanimously recommends to approve Article eleven.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I'm gonna recommend on twelve, if you'd like, I have a summary that we haven't quite finished up for, for, for drone dissemination, but I can certainly read from it. It's a much more succinct summary of what this bylaw does, which is rather lengthy, so.
Okay, so it just starts off by saying to see if the town will vote to amend Lakeville General Bylaws by deleting section entitled Earth Removal and replacing it with a new section entitled Earth Work. And you can give us the summary.
This bylaw basically expands the existing removal of earth bylaw to include earth removal, stockpiling, and fill operations to reflect current, you know, how activity works nowadays more. There's, there's three different, three major definitions. It's earth removal, which is removal of earth from its present location. Fill, use of earth from another location for the purpose of changing the topography of a site. And stockpiling, which is keeping and storage of earth brought to a site from another location for the purpose of using it. It also codifies the specific conditions under which a permit is not required, including earth work by a governmental entity, earth work involving less than five thousand cubic yards of earth in a single calendar year, earth work in connection with agricultural use, earth work that's incidental to the construction or installation of buildings or structures or swimming pools, and the transfer of earth from one portion of a parcel to another portion of the same parcel for the purposes of improving that parcel. And also, and this is the financial aspect of it, I'm consolidating some sections. It also updates the penalties for lack of compliance. Previously, a first penalty was fifty dollars, first offense was fifty dollars, second offense was a hundred dollars, third and subsequent were two hundred dollars. This bylaw increases those to a hundred dollars for the first offense, two hundred dollars for the second offense, and three hundred dollars for third and subsequent offenses. That's my, that's my quickie summary.
Thank you. Does, also to note on this, this was a change that was suggested by council a couple of years back that we just haven't had the opportunity to do until now.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the Finance Committee? Mr. Day?
Madam Chair or Ari, of the, of the last couple of years of earth removal permits have gone out, how many would have fallen at less than five thousand cubic yards? I mean, would we have many left?
Not that many would have fallen to five thousand or less. Not, not that many, five thousand is fairly tight. It's really tight, I can't give you the exact number, Brian, but I certainly could get it for you. The, but, but we, we, we sell quite, we sell, we don't have that many earth removal permits, but the ones that we've had would certainly, would qualify.
So there'd be some small number of money that's no longer received?
Yeah, I don't think it would be much, five thousand is not much. For example, the project that the last, there's only been one or three removal permits since I've come on board, and that was the one for the storage space near the hospital site. And that, that one would have, you know, would have passed the threshold. And that's not that big a project.
Is the board also revisiting the fee per cubic yard?
I do not.
We haven't.
Yeah. The penalties are updated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, Madam Chair?
Yep.
It doesn't require a town meeting approval, Brian. It just can be voted by the Board of Selectmen, that is, and I think it's fifteen cents cubic yard.
They set those on a periodic basis, yeah.
And so that, that should be updated, I agree with you. Currently, I think we have three active earth removal permits that really have not really removed a lot of earth at this point. So it's minimal anyway, so what the town gets as far as revenue is concerned. The revenue part that we do get is when they renew their permit, and there's a permit fee that we get, the town gets for those earth removal permits. And those are, those will continue as is.
That's usually like a fee per acre, if I remember correctly? And then on top of that, the cubic yardage removed?
Correct, yeah.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll turn it over to Darren.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve Article twelve?
I move.
Second? Okay, so vote, Katie?
Hi.
Brian?
Hey, I.
Adam?
I.
And Darren, I, so the Finance Committee unanimously recommends to approve Article twelve.
Okay, and I do believe that's it, right?
I think that's it.
That's it. So just to reiterate, town meeting is November eighth, twenty-twenty-one, seven P.M. at Upon Equit, and you, anyone not to vote at that meeting must register to vote in the clerk's office by this Friday. Late in the afternoon, all right, okay, I think that's good. Thank you, everyone, Darren, anything else?
Yeah, can we, we have two sets of minutes we need to approve. Is that okay, Madam Chair? We'll do it quickly.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Before we close our meeting, thank you. Okay, so I'll start with the September fourteenth minutes. Brian, Mr. Day, you can pass on this since you weren't able to attend. So I'm looking for a motion to approve. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the September 14 minutes.
Move.
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Adam?
I.
Katie?
I.
Darren, I. So the September 14 minutes are approved. And the October 12 minutes, actually, Mr. Lynch, you were not present, so we will ask you to not vote. But Katie and Brian, have you reviewed the minutes? Okay, can someone make a motion to approve the October 12 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Katie?
I.
Brian?
Hey, I.
And Darren, I. So the October 12 minutes have been approved. And do I have a motion to close the finance committee meeting?
Second.
Okay, and one more, one more vote. Katie?
I.
Hey, I.
Adam?
Adam, I.
And Darren, I. Finance committee meeting is closed. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. So next, we have agenda item number three, which is a presentation from SERPED regarding Lakeville Americans with Disabilities Act. Facility studies with us is Lizeth, is that who you say that? Sorry, Gonzalez from SERPED. SERPED is the regional planning folks in our area. So if you would, any, does anyone need to say anything before we start? Rich, Lorraine, Ari, or we just want to get into it?
I'll just say very quickly, this is a process that's been going on for some time, since well before I came on board, I think. Prior administrator was involved, I think Rich was involved, and I've been involved. We're happy to get this to near the endpoint. And the SERPED's been good to work with and has been very responsive to our questions and concerns along the way. So I'd just like to, you know, say that, just say that part for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so why don't we turn it over to you, Lizeth, and you can give us your presentation. Thanks.
All right, sounds good. I'm going to share my screen. Can someone give me screen sharing access?
Yep, just give me one second.
Thanks.
You should be all set now.
All right, thank you. There we go. All right, so let's start at the town. So thank you for the introduction. Thank you for your words, Ari. I'm really glad to be here tonight to talk about the Lakeville Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. I'll be talking about some of the findings that we've been putting together in this more or less draft version of the plan. I want to mention that this is an opportunity to kind of introduce our project and really get a feel for what we've been doing and how we've been doing it and get a sense for those findings that we've produced. We'll have an opportunity to kind of gather feedback over the next couple of weeks. So I want to let everyone know that this is a work in progress and there's an opportunity to still make any changes if that is something of interest. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our background, why we pursued this to begin with, our process, a little bit about how we went through categorizing all of these violations and our methodology, and then just talk about some next steps and take any questions. So as many of you might know, the Americans with Disabilities Act passed in 1990, and it prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability in a wide range of areas of both public and private life, really. So Title II of that law impacts state and local governments in the fact that we are required to do a self-assessment and really give some kind of sense for our own compliance with the ADA, and that is the Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. Achieving compliance can be a little challenging, and it's not unique. Many communities struggle with this. You know, we're talking about capacity issues, funding issues. And with that recognition, it's also important to note that not having an ADA self-evaluation and transition plan can also be damaging to a community. It exposes communities to litigation, vulnerabilities of that kind. So we want to make sure we're protecting ourselves and ensuring accessibility for our communities. Luckily, the Massachusetts Office on Disability, or MOD, offers the Municipal ADA Improvement Grant Program. And as Ari mentioned, we partnered with the town of Lakeville to apply for this grant and obtain funding to pursue the planning grant for the Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. So our process is really three-pronged. We do an overview of communication practices and some general policies in town. Will, we did a survey of Lakeville's public facilities, so town hall, library, some recreation sites as well. And we also conducted a survey of the Quarter Mile Walk Shed, just as important as being able to navigate the interior of a facility as being able to access it in the first place, whether it's walking or parking. So the first part of that, we completed some surveys and some feedback methods in order to gather a sense for where the town is with communication practices and just ADA policies in general. So we shared and conducted a self-assessment with town administration as well as a staff survey that I wouldn't say necessarily represents everyone in town, because we didn't get 100% participation. But it did show some trends that are consistent with similar communities. You know, we're talking about a need for some expanded capacity as well as training and some tools just to help us support those communication practices that will help enable accessibility for everyone. With that, we also did an inventory of those policies and procedures. So we're talking about like non-discrimination practices as well as a policy that may be posted in town, and then grievance procedures. So if anyone has any issues related to this, they know who they can go to and what that process is like. We conducted site visits to all facilities in town. And right here, you can see that's a 3D model of animal control as well as a site plan for, for what that looks like. And we found generally that facilities constructed within the last 20 years comply with ADA for the most part. Some minor issues, nothing, nothing major. And when it comes to buildings with little to no public use, they often lacked accessible restrooms. And abandoned buildings required significant improvements for some obvious reasons. But it's important to mention that because if we ever choose to rehabilitate them or bring them up into the, you know, envelope of public use again, we need to make sure that when we redevelop them, they're accessible to all individuals. And then the Quarter Mile Walk Shed, we used drone flights to take pictures and really illustrate what improvements were needed across town. And we found there was some common needs for repaving sidewalks for grade and condition, including more tactile warning panels to show when there is a break in the sidewalk that may, may serve as an exit or entry point for vehicles, and then additional crosswalks to ensure safety in that we know where we should be crossing, so it's the safest. I want to also mention that state and local roads were considered, though the town is only responsible for making improvements upon the roads it owns and maintains. But it's important to mention those state roads because actually there are many town-owned facilities along those state roads. And when it comes time to either collaborate with MassDOT or make improvements upon that road, it gives a town some, some ability to say, hey, we need to make these improvements. So in creating these violations, we didn't want to just share a whole laundry list of things that needed to be addressed. We hope to be able to provide some sort of order to this, these recommendations. So with that, we created cost estimate ranges. With the highly fluctuating cost of labor, cost of materials, it made more sense to create these ranges that the town, when they choose to pursue improvements, whether it be something minor, like changing a doorknob handle that, you know, maintenance can deal with, or when it comes to really subbing out something and putting something out for bid, get that estimate, and hopefully it falls within that range. But you can plan for it with that kind of estimate in mind. The most important element to our methodology is really the prioritization model. And we create four levels of priority in order for the town to get a sense for what is most important. And when I think of this prioritization model, I really think of what aspects of town facilities are critical and crucial to providing services that are the intended purpose of these departments that are housed in these facilities. So one is facility access. That's simply getting into the front door. So we want to make sure that we have accessible parking with the right dimensions and the right locations. When we talk about interior navigation, we're ensuring that aisles are accessible. So it's really important when we're talking about library, ensuring that everyone can access those books that are critical to the service delivery there. And counter spaces, right, to make sure that people can reach them, whether they have a disability or not. Now, we included restroom access as critical, just so that way. If public restrooms are provided for the general public, there should be a restroom provided for those with disabilities. And then additional amenities that touches on issues and items such as water fountains that aren't critical to service delivery, but may be present in a building that we should be taking into account. I'm going to go through three examples really quickly about high, medium, and low compliance with the ADA, just so you can get a sense for, for what some of these violations look like and get a sense for, for where the town is at with the, with the number of their buildings. So the public library, it's one that we consider to have pretty high compliance, built in 2004, so it falls within that 20-year range. All services are on one floor, so that's a really great aspect of, of that town building. Counters and aisles are of the right height and width. And really, the only issue we found there were minor improvements in, in regards to restroom. So changing out soap pumps or ensuring that certain co-hooks are of the right, of the right height. Loon Pond Lodge, though it is a facility that's rented out for private events, it is still a public building, so one that we considered in our assessment. We consider it to have medium compliance. Generally speaking, it does hit all the marks. It's, all services are on one floor. But we did find that there were significant improvements needed at the parking lot. As you can see there, this is one of the drone shots that we took. There, it's not for a lack of accessible parking. Loon Pond Lodge hits all of that. It's the fact that there isn't a continuous route from the parking to the main accessible entrance. And I'm happy to say that as we're speaking and going through all of this, I've been working closely with Nate and Ari, and some of these improvements are already underway. And just goes to show how the town is being proactive in, you know, making these improvements. But we want to make sure we memorialize them a little bit, so that way we can say and show the changes that we've made from beginning to end and how far we've come. And last one is the Department of Public Works, also another situation where we're looking at actively making improvements. So the DPW and the Highway Department kind of live in this temporary portable unit. It lacks accessible parking. It's only accessible by stairs, and there aren't any public or employee restrooms available in that trailer. So this one obviously is considered low compliance. But again, I'm also, you know, relieved and happy to say that the town is also actively pursuing improvements in this building by doing complete redevelopment. And of course, that will have all the considerations for accessibility and ADA compliance. So that's another positive win for the town there. But just to give you a sense for some of the things that we're looking at when it comes to these site visits. And lastly, I want to take a look at one of the Quarter Mile Walk Sheds that we completed. This is a shot of Precinct Street, looking into Old Town Hall. And you'll see there that our major recommendations here are sidewalks, curb cuts. If you can, if you can see my cursor over here as the parking lot is opening, there's nothing to show that that entry point is there. So just showing that, recommending those things, and really highlighting the need for some of those connections in order to ensure accessibility and safety, of course. So the next steps, we've completed this plan. We've highlighted all the possible improvements and recommendations that we can make. So the next steps are really taking in some comments, sitting with the plan. If you have any comments or suggestions, or you share it with someone and they have comments or suggestions, we have a project website that I can share with everyone at the end of this presentation, and we'll be accepting those through November 8. So it's about a two-week period. And as we move past this period of, you know, completing the plan and we think about how we can make improvements, MOD also offers project grants as part of their municipal ADA program. That opens in usually late summer, so I'm expecting late summer 2022. But that grant program allows you to directly apply to really make the improvements that are outlined in this plan. And you can, I've, I've seen really successful stories of other communities taking action on their plans through this way. And in the meantime, I think it's a good idea to really look at the resources provided in the plan. I provide a list of, of not only state agencies, but public services that provide training and some technology and resource services to expand in-house capacity for dealing with individuals with disability and their unique communication needs. So that finishes out my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions if anyone has any.
Looks pretty thorough to me. Yeah, it does look like a lot of work was done, and just like you mentioned, Lizeth, we are working, trying to correct some of these things on our own too already. So it's nice to know that we're working in, in a good direction. But being able to apply for grant money will certainly assist in being able to make some other changes going forward. Ari, Rich, anything?
I will say the technology they use to, to survey the spaces is amazing. It's this, this three, this, these 3D models that you take just by pointing this, it's, it's like something out of like The Matrix. It's, it's wild.
All right. Could you give us the information again on if anyone has comments or, and who that would be for?
So there is a project website. I can, let me stop sharing, and I will send you the link. Can I just throw it in the chat?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So there is a public comment form, but also you can send it directly to my email if you so choose. I always check that, so that's always an option, and I'll send that in there as well.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So if no one has any other questions, I'll say thank you from all of us. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for a really clear, concise presentation. And we look forward to being able to get some grant money and start working on some of these.
For sure. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Nice job.
All right. Let's see, so. Okay, so we have our folks here from Beta, yes? Is that Emily? Okay. And we also have with us Fire Chief Michael O'Brien. Next, we have a presentation by Beta Group on the Lakeville Hazardous Mitigation Plan. I don't know if Ari or the chief would like to give us just a quick description of what a Lakeville, what the hazardous mitigation plan is, just for the folks at home who may be watching.
Chief, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Basically, it's, we're in the process of developing a plan. We have to do a hazard analysis. We do, we reach out to our, all stakeholders and especially the members of the public to determine what they're, what the most, what they're concerned about. And then there's people like Emily who are very good at their work, and they determine what are the most likely scenarios for us. And essentially, we develop a, a plan for dealing with those. And, and we, we work to mitigate the, the, the most pressing threats of the threats that have the potential to cause the most harm to us.
Okay. So Emily, if you want to maybe just tell us a little bit about who Beta is, we all know, but I'm sure some of the folks at home don't know. And if you'd like to take it away.
Great. Could I, do I have screen share access here? It looks like I do. And thank you. So yeah, quick primer on Beta. Beta is a full Beta is a full-service municipal engineering and planning group. We have offices in Massachusetts and in Rhode Island, Connecticut, and also New Hampshire. And I am based out of Massachusetts. I've been with Beta for just under a year. And my role is really to expand our climate resilience and hazard mitigation planning work. So this is right up my alley, right in my wheelhouse. And I also wanted to mention personally that I spent part of my childhood growing up very close to Lakeville. Southeast Massachusetts is very near and dear to my heart, and I spend most of my summers out and about now that way. So it's fun to have a job here. So I've got, I think about 20 slides today. I'm gonna go as quickly as possible, but I really wanted to give the board a background of what hazard mitigation planning is, and so you know what we're in for here, what we're getting into. And then open up for questions, and certainly if you have any comments. That's another thing that we like to take opportunity to do these presentations to select board meetings because you all know so much about the town. And so we think of this as part of our public engagement process, albeit a little bit shorter format since we know that we're all on a tight time budget. So with that, I'm going to jump right into the presentation. Let's see here. Okay, so I'm just noticing, are you all seeing subtitles on the screen?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, well, since I don't know how that got there, I'm not going to try to take it off. I guess it's kind of a neat function, as long as it's not bothering anyone. So again, overview of the benefits of hazard mitigation planning. We'll talk about the process for updating a plan, which is what we're doing in Lakeville. How we identify hazards and the risk elements of those hazards. And then if we have time, we'll all, you know, we can have a discussion. I'll certainly take questions regardless of the time. This is FEMA's definition of hazard mitigation. It's any sustained action taken to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property from natural hazards. And just some examples on the slide. A lot of this stuff are general municipal operational tasks. These are things that oftentimes your community is already doing out of the DPW department, out of the highway department or fire department. But there are other elements that maybe don't get quite as much attention, and that's why we do a plan. So the plan itself, it's looking at the town's commitment to reducing risk. And it's serving as a five-year guide for you all, for decision-makers, about how we commit resources to minimize the negative impacts of natural hazards. The plan helps prepare for and mitigate those effects, and we hope that it builds a more resilient community. And I'll say upfront, and I'll talk a little bit about this later on, but natural hazards can mean different things for different communities. Lakeville looks at flooding, and we're going to look at some dam failure issues. We're going to look at brush fires. But you know, if we were out in California, we, the order of operations is here would be all different. We'd definitely, definitely be looking at major wildfires. We'd be looking at earthquake. Not to say we won't consider earthquake here, but the risk evaluation is very different. So what else comes out of the plan? One of the reasons you have a hazard mitigation plan is because you want to be eligible for FEMA grant funding through the Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program. You can get pre and post-disaster recovery mitigation grants. And those pots of money have been growing exponentially in recent years, especially this year because of COVID. So the annual HMA grant generally arrives June every year. The grant window opens in June of every year. And then the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which is one of those, and it's based on disaster funding that comes in the wake of a declared disaster in the state. All of these programs are administered through MEMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, but they are FEMA grants. Another one on this slide, I'll just point out is the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant, referred to as the BRIC grant. That has been around for about two years. It's the new age version of the pre-disaster mitigation grant, which has been phased out. And what makes BRIC really special is that it is opened FEMA up to the concept of nature-based solutions for mitigating natural hazards. Not to say that you need to do green infrastructure on all of your BRIC grants, but just to say that FEMA now accepts these projects. They understand that this is a part of the solution, this is a tool in the toolbox, and they're willing to fund that as part of their mitigation grants. And then lastly, supporting the National Fund Insurance Program, of which Lakeville is a participating community. All right. So the emergency management cycle, really the point of me showing this slide is just to illustrate where we are on this cycle of emergency management and to make a bit of a distinction where mitigation is versus where preparedness or response or even recovery are. So that little lightning bolt is your hurricane, say. We come in to do mitigation planning before the event happens. And it could be a month before the event happens, it could be two years before the event happens. But the point is, we invest a dollar now and we save $6 later in response and recovery. And that's why mitigation is such a priority nationally from our federal agencies. And again, what comes out of hazard mitigation versus hazard preparedness or disaster preparedness, some of the things we might, we'll certainly look at and that we might make recommendations for would be planning and zoning, open space preservation to mitigate flood impacts, doing education and outreach to help individuals better understand the risks and do some personal preparedness. So there's that overlap. Drainage improvements, again, to mitigate the impacts of severe or heavy rain events, which could lead to flooding. But if we've made some tweaks to our drainage, maybe we can avoid that. Where preparedness, you're looking more at evacuation planning, emergency shelters, specific emergency response equipment. We might talk about emergency shelters, and we might talk about radio equipment capabilities, but it's not going to be quite as much the focus. So this is generally the planning process. We'll have these, I say here, committee meetings, but you know, we might be calling it a hazard mitigation working group. We'll have those meetings throughout the process. We'll have a couple of public meetings. This is going to be one of them. We'll do more of a traditional public meeting that where we're inviting members of the public to participate in discussion probably in about a month. We'll prepare a draft for public review, put that out for about a month to get some feedback. Then it goes to MEMA. They give us feedback. We then finalize it. It goes to FEMA. They take about a month to do a review. They send it back. They say, looks good. And then we bring it back to the town for local adoption. So that's when the Board of Selectmen will probably see me again, or certainly the chief, and will present on the plan, and we'll ask for the thumbs up. With that signature, the plan goes back to FEMA with the letter of adoption, and then you have a final plan update. This is just our timeline, sort of the same things I just discussed there, but looking at the months. So we're shooting to have a overturned draft from FEMA with their conditional approval in early 2022. That's our timeline right now. And actually, if I'll just back up right here, the public meeting that I mentioned, I'd like to see that happen next month, if possible. We haven't, we haven't talked about a date yet, but in my mind, that's the best timeline to do it. I don't want to get too close to the Christmas holiday and vacation in December. And then early January, we're sort of already too late in the process to stay with this schedule if we have a public meeting out there. So the planning group, just to say that FEMA cares deeply about the participation element of these planning processes. Excuse me, municipalities are required to have active participation. And so the biggest way that this happens, because while I've been doing these plans for 10-plus years, I can be honest and say that they don't elicit huge outpouring of public participation at the public meetings. What we do ensure with every plan update process is that we have a very robust and diverse and well-rounded planning committee. And so that's what we have here. Chief O'Brien has led the plan update process thus far. And a few months ago, started pulling together this team to serve as a steering committee for the process. The team includes a number of members of the MVP planning process, which is a really important overlap. And I'll discuss that in a little bit. We're talking about severe weather and extreme hazard events. And much of those are being altered by the impacts of climate change. So having the MVP group representation, and for those that don't know, I'm sorry, I'm jumping to acronyms. MVP is Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Process that the town undertook a few years ago under a grant through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, where you looked at your town's vulnerabilities to the impacts of climate change. So you already have that report. And a lot of what you found in that report is going to help us write the hazard mitigation plan. The elements of the plan itself, they really center around this risk assessment. And so that's, that's an amalgam of different things. We identify what hazards are concerning to the town. We look at what the town has in its toolbox, what capabilities do you have to mitigate those hazards? What sort of zoning code and floodplain ordinance? And man and woman power in your highway department, do you have? And what are your critical facilities and where are they located? You know, do you have a fire department or a town hall that's squarely in the flood zone? And that sort of leads us to the vulnerability assessment. You look at those capabilities and those critical facilities and those hazards, and you say, well, what, where are we at greatest risk? Where are our vulnerable populations and how are they at risk to these hazards that we've identified? And all of that is in this section of the plan called the risk assessment. From there, we move on to the mitigation strategy. And this is, this is your blueprint, these are your plans for reducing losses that you have identified as risks in the risk assessment. So we're going to look at previously completed plans and projects that the town has undertaken, including that MVP project, but also your recent master plan, some regional reports that are going to be really valuable that SERPED did, and also the last hazard mitigation plan for Lakeville, which, or sorry, the previous versions of the hazard mitigation plan, and there was the 2004 regional plan that SERPED did, and then a subsequent plan. So we'll look at all of these and consider the recommendations in these plans. The fact that you have such a recent master plan is going to be really helpful for the process. These other plans, you know, that some are older, but most of them, at least on this slide, are fairly new. So we'll look at what came out of those, how they interface and could be integrated with the vulnerabilities that we've identified through the risk assessment, and we will align the mitigation strategies. So the municipalities have to do hazard mitigation planning if they want to be eligible for all these other, for the grants and for NFIP participation that I mentioned on the previous slide. States also have to do the same thing. And Massachusetts last updated the state hazard mitigation plan in 2018. And it was a really big deal because it was the first, we were the first state to ever do an integrated hazard mitigation and climate adaptation plan. And so they really pushed the boundary there. It's a great plan. And what it did was it built a framework for then, for communities to be able to follow so that they can organize their own plans by climate impact, the same way that the state did. And so that, we're recommending that Lakeville do the same. And this is sorting the natural hazards that have been identified and that we'll review for this plan update, but sorting those into three major categories of changes in precipitation, rising temperatures, and extreme weather. And like I said, the plan will also assess earthquakes and some other non-climate-related hazards. But where they are relevant, they'll be sorted into this this framework. So the other thing that's important to note here is that we are doing a somewhat truncated process for this plan update. And the reason being is that the town did have some funding two years ago where SERPED came in and sort of started this process. It was at the tail end of the MVP plan. And SERPED, you know, coordinated with MEMA, they pulled together some resources, and they just couldn't finish with the time and the budget that they had. So Beta was delivered sort of some draft elements of SERPED's work. And we're using those as a jumping off point. And the reason I wanted to say that is just because we're going to pick up where they left off and we're going to utilize the resources that they provided and that they completed, which are good, which are very valuable. And then we're going to make sure that we're meeting all of the relevant requirements of the MEMA and FEMA mitigation plan process. And again, that's going to be our public participation, and it's really just going to be making sure that we have all of the the relevant information in all of these sections of the plan. This screen is showing us the hazards that were identified in the state 2018 Hazard Mitigation Climate Adaptation Plan. It's a requirement for communities to evaluate all hazards that the state identifies, even if a community says, yeah, that's not a problem here. You know, maybe you're in a mountainous state that also has low valleys and plains. And so, you know, if you're in the plains, you're not going to have to deal with avalanche. In this case, most of them are somewhat relevant, with the exception of coastal hazards. And then to the right here, just a snapshot of a public survey that we did put out already. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. But some of the top hazards of concern from that survey were severe snowstorm, hurricane, tropical storm, and flooding. And that aligns both with state hazards of concern, as well as the SERPED, last, the former hazard mitigation plan, SERPED hazards of concern. So another thing we look at is the town's assets and critical facilities. Again, what's at risk? We're going to look at people, property, economy, and the environment. So your local business district, your open spaces, your critical environmental areas, certainly town-owned properties. And with a specific eye towards operations during hazard events. And again, that's where we're going to have this preparedness and mitigation overlap because we do need to make sure that emergency management officials, actors, responders can do what they need to do during these hazardous events. If we have an evacuation route or, you know, a road that leads to a nursing home from the fire department that's underwater with a 10-year storm, then we've got a problem. And so we'll look at things like that. And the existing capability assessment that I mentioned, this is a pretty, pretty well-rounded set of examples of the types of capabilities we'll look at. And these are actually specific to Lakeville here. So we know that you've got, I'm going to go bottom left here, the new FEMA flood maps and floodplain bylaw. That's a great, great step that you've already completed and super valuable. As you know, most towns have been working with 30-year-old FEMA flood maps for a long time. And it's been really hard to and it's it's been really hard to find meaningful regulation or regulatory authority there. Your master plan of twenty twenty, your open space plan is due for an update, but but you do have one. And I actually, I've I've found from the website that you do have an open space committee working on updating that plan, and they're, I think, currently doing a survey. And so we'll we'll touch base with them and make sure that that we're coordinating again with our findings. I noted that that the town hasn't been able yet to adopt CPA, but I was encouraged to hear that that's going back to this special town meeting from the presenter earlier on on tonight's agenda. And another another initiative that we often find as a recommended strategy in a hazard mitigation plan is a wetland protection bylaw. And I also know that and the town has one that has been developed, but it failed at a twenty sixteen town meeting. So that's going to be something that might come up as a strategy. You know, maybe there needs to be some more public education, or and maybe there there's some more contacts that we need to know about why that didn't pass. All right, and the public survey, and I was going to have Chief O'Brien jump in here to talk a little bit about this, because he was a big part of deploying this survey. And I I put a couple of the a couple of comments that came out of the survey on this slide, but there's certainly more to it. And I'll just say that we had three hundred and twenty-five replies, which which is a very good response rate for a town the size of Lakeville. It's it's also a statistically valid sample size, so some of the responses here, something else not on the screen is just that seventeen percent of respondents receive their information about town happenings through email, fourteen percent from Code Red, which is the emergency response, sort of reverse nine-one-one system, and then thirteen percent through social media. Chiefs, do you want to say anything about the survey?
Just that I appreciate all the agencies that helped share it and the selectmen's office will also push it out on the on the town website. I was happy with the response, and I'm grateful for the technology that allowed me to to collect all the data that was received.
Great. All right, moving right along. So, you know, that's where we are and what we're what we're currently doing, what we've just completed with the survey. So our next steps here, we're going to continue to have meetings of that internal steering committee. And we are going to have a virtual public meeting to gather input on the mitigation strategies. And again, that's date TBD in mid to late November, and probably before the holiday, and I'm open for thoughts and recommendations for a date on on that. I did note that your your town meeting is November eighth, is that correct? Okay, so we we're obviously not going to interfere with that. But I don't know, you know, I'd like to hear from you all if there's if there's any period of time that refreshes folks, you know, combating the meeting fatigue. How much time do we need to wait to get people to come back for another public meeting if they've just attended the the town meeting, or if that's not a problem in Lakeville? And then after we do that public meeting, we'll be basically synthesizing the comments and synthesizing the rest of the material that we have for the plan and pulling it all together to put out that draft for review. And again, once we have the public review and the agency review, we'll we'll bring it back to the Board of Selectmen for your adoption. And so that's that's the presentation. Are there any questions, comments, input that you'd like to share?
Emily, I'd just like to let you know that we recently had a an outdoor meeting with SERPED on some of the pond issues. And it was, in my opinion, we had about eighteen participants in addition to the folks from SERPED and some of the local folks that are working on that. I thought that was a pretty good turnout, actually.
Yeah.
So we may just get because of the the flooding issues around the water, we may get people to come in, and we've had some really good comments at that meeting. So we can, you know, we'll definitely work with you on that. I know it's getting chilly. I know it's getting dark, but maybe a daytime meeting outside, if it's still bearable, would work.
All right, I'm I'm going to make that note. I am coordinating with Bill Napolitano at SERPED pretty closely on this, so we haven't spoken in a couple of weeks. Was he leading that meeting?
Yep.
Great. I'll touch base with him and and see not only what the outcomes were, what those comments were, but maybe if he has recommendations on that.
Yeah, most of them, of course, because it had to do with the pond, were flood-related, but yeah, but I thought it was pretty well-attended, actually, and that was our first first try at a at a public meeting for that, so.
That's great. That must have felt really nice. To be back around real people.
Yeah.
On site.
Yeah, there was a second one. I don't know, a second one for the folks in Taunton, but I didn't attend that one, so I'm not sure, but I'm sure Bill could fill you in on that.
Sure. Thanks, Leah.
Yep.
Through the chair, Emily, when we did the MVP program, Saturday mornings seemed to work out well, too, you know, for a very finite period of time. And Bill obviously was in, you know, running those meetings. So he'll have some input for that, too.
Great. Okay, is there, given just the the season we're talking about, if it's too cold to be outside, i- is there a large auditorium where we could have a socially-distanced indoor meeting in Lakeville?
Um, yeah, I think so. The library holds a lot of people. Sometimes the lodge building itself. If there's no event, I mean, it's hard because they're booked on the weekend, so if we go more towards a weekend day.
Yeah.
They might be booked, but I'm sure we could, you know, we can work with the Town Administrator's Office to organize a a building.
Okay, well, we'll we'll consider that. I actually wasn't sure that it was that the town was open to in-person meetings, so so that that could change our approach a little bit.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
I'm wondering, I I was really pleasantly surprised to see how much important information there was in this in this report. And I'm wondering, Emily, if I might be able to get a copy of these slides, if I emailed you, would I be able to get a copy of these slides? Because I'm sure my notes didn't get all of the information that I need. Quite frankly, I think some of this information applies to a an issue that I'm here for later on, so I'd be, I'd like to get that info if I could.
Yeah, absolutely. So I've provided the slides to the Select Board. But I could also send you that PDF if you emailed me directly, and my contact information is
Okay, if the Select Board has them, then I could probably get them from them.
We could probably give it to you, Bob, because it may have even been posted with the rest of the packet online.
Yeah, they were. They're posted with the packet.
I'm sure they were. I I I have to say that I got a lot of, I I really got educated tonight on a number of things. Not the least of which is how much time all of you folks put in on some things that I never give a second thought to, and thank you all for that. I'll I'll check with Tracy perhaps in the morning and see if I can get the slides from her.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions, Chief?
I'd like to thank the committee members who are logged in right now, watching on Facebook. The vast majority of the committees engage right now and taking this all in. So I appreciate their contribution to all this and the time they spent tonight as well.
Yes, and I second that. Okay, if there's no other questions, then we will look to the chief's direction on coordinating the Hazard Mitigation Committee through this process, and hopefully we can put something together to be able to do that public meeting. I think, I'm hoping it will be well-attended as also.
Right. Thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Okay. Let's see. I'm going to skip now to agenda item number eight. There we go. I know we have I'm going to make an attempt, John Virella with us?
Virella, yeah.
Virella, I'm sorry, John.
No, you got it. That's fine.
Well, there you are.
Yeah, I turned my camera on.
Okay, so I'm going to take you a little out of order, because I know that you've been here with us for since the beginning of the meeting, but maybe you've learned a lot about Lakeville while sitting here, huh?
Indeed, I have.
Okay, I'm going to ask Ari now to to take this one over for me?
Happy to, thank you. So the HR director, as you know, became vacant due to a reassignment or transfer within the organization. We advertised widely on municipal job listing and placement sites, social media, as well as the town's website. Altogether, the town received seventy-six applications. Actually, seventy-six resumes, twenty-two of which, when we when we asked back, we submitted full applications. Two candidates also withdrew. Interviews were held beginning the week of September thirteenth. The panel consisted of myself, the town clerk, fire chief, police chief, our public works director, and and the former, now assumed to be former HR director, Quinna Dumphy. I'm pleased to inform you that we unanimously recommended John Virella for the position. John has been the H Director of Human Resources for the city of Revere since twenty seventeen. His previous experience includes seven years as the HR manager for a government consulting firm, and two years as an HR business partner with Booz Allen Hamilton. In acknowledgement of his extensive government experience and to maintain competitiveness with this current compensation, we respectfully recommend that he be offered a salary of eighty-seven thousand dollars per year. And in addition, John currently earns three weeks' annual vacation in his current position. So he'd also request that he be provided the same in Lakeville, starting in Lakeville, to maintain his current rate of accrual. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. I'm sure John will be happy to as well.
Okay. So in addition to all that, I did notice, too, I thought, John, that you've also done the program at Suffolk as well, that's correct?
I did. It's a it's a forty-week program. Runs from nine to four every Friday for a series of months. It was a wonderful opportunity. I loved it.
Yeah, I think Selectman Carboni's done the same one, so I know it's it's pretty involved, and I'm sure you didn't have to do that, so that that's, you know, that's that's pretty ambitious with, I'm sure, was your current workload. So does anyone else on the board have any questions or any comments?
I found your resume to be pretty, pretty impressive, and you know, the feedback based on the interviews, I was pleased to see that it was unanimous. I can appreciate that, so. And it's nice to finally meet you.
Yeah. I agree.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anything, Rich?
No, I'm all set.
Okay.
Did a great job.
Yep, okay, so I will, let's see here, for I will entertain a motion that we appoint John Virella. I don't even know if I said that, my apologies, as the town's human resource director at eighty-seven thousand per year for salary and three weeks vacation. As noted by our town administrator. So moved.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
And to give the approval of the town administrator to approve this contract.
Oh, yes, and to the town administrator the approval to approve the contract, sign the contract.
Unless the town administrator wants the board to sign it either way.
Um, so we hadn't really discussed directly doing a contract. I'll be happy to, you know, work
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, well, entertain a motion that we high appoint John Virella as the Human Resource Director with eighty-seven thousand salary, three weeks vacation.
And I seconded the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Has all the other paperwork, background check, everything been done?
Yes.
Okay.
I had a very nice conversation, by the way, with the mayor of Revere, who is who gave very high recommendation, but is very unhappy about him leaving.
That sounds a little similar to your situation, wasn't it, Ari?
Probably.
Yeah. Lakeville's a great place.
When would, when would the start date be?
John, I believe you're looking November twenty-ninth, right?
Right. Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Great. Okay, if there's nothing else, all those in favor.
Carboni, I.
Camera, I.
Fabian, I. Welcome to Lakeville.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I I think you're gonna, I think you'll, I think you'll like it here. It's a, it's a great place. People come and never leave. It can't be bad.
I'm I'm sure I will.
All right, and thank you also for waiting patiently through all the other. But I, it is a lot of information that I'm sure you picked up on where we're at in town and sort of some of the things that we're doing, so. And having met with that that search committee group, I'm sure you met some of the, you know, most busiest department heads, I guess I would say. You know, police chief, fire chief, and the and the search committee, so great people here. Nice to have you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on, so now we're going to sort of go back to number five, which is Board of Selectmen announcements. So again, I'll reiterate, Friday, October twenty-ninth, which is this Friday, is your final opportunity to register to vote for the November eighth, twenty twenty-one special town meeting. If you are registered to vote in Lakeville, you can go to town meeting and cast your vote. Special town meeting is being held on November eighth, twenty twenty-one at seven o'clock PM at Ponnetwood Regional High School. The warrant can be found on the town's webpage under news and on the town's Facebook page. And also November eighth, the selectmen have a quick meeting at six o'clock, so if you come at six, you'll get two for one night. Next, we have, unless, does anyone else have any announcements? I'm sorry.
The only thing I want to say is that the Sacred Heart Food Pantry is providing turkey dinners to individuals that are in need, and that information is on our website, as well as the Sacred Heart Food Pantry website.
Okay. And Madam Chair, the Calhoun Aging's boat drive is still ongoing through the first part of November.
Okay. They had a, what looked like a great Halloween drive-through there today. Okay. Number seven, I will turn it over to Ari Sky for town administrator announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several announcements. I'm pleased to announce that the building department will move to its new location at two forty-one Main Street, also known as the Old Library, effective November twenty-second. The other portions of the of the operation will be following soon thereafter. In the area of procurement, we've made some progress in number, a number of areas. We've had initial scope of work meetings with Pomeroy. We have one with CBI this week. Pomeroy will be handling the DPW building. CBI will be handling the town hall study. The IFBs for the haunted house demolition The IFBs for the haunted house demolition and the peach barn roof will be on the street this week. The Assessor Contract has been extended through the end of December. The RFPs, you recall, there were some issues with that. Will be reissued in the next few weeks or so. We were getting a number of changes in weather, on weather announcements. We're trying to put a number of us processes to ensure more effective community notification within the organization using the IM Responding Service the fire department uses when it comes to weather closures. And, and we've, we're creating a working group which will make recommendations to the chair during, during storm issues, make sure that, that we have full communication. Everyone's on the same page. I had a meeting, I mean, with NFP this weekend, one or two weeks ago as well, to develop affordability options for the town's healthcare coverage. We're looking at both cost share and high deductible plans as a sort of a two-pronged approach to, to, to addressing the healthcare issue. Um, our internal budget kickoff for the departments is scheduled for November fourth. I've had meetings over the past week with the Freetown Lakeville District and Old Colony to establish timelines and general expectations regarding our ability to pay and some make sure that we have a good communication and process going forward. Finally, Christina Caceres and I met with the staff for Representative Ockingkloss today. He was in, they were in town. They're looking forward to the tour of the APC complex on Friday. So I have, thank you.
Sounds pretty busy. Does anyone have? Does anyone have any questions on any of that? Okay. Um, thank you, Ari, for that. Um, next on the agenda, we have Agenda Item Number Seven. So this is, um, a discussion and a possible vote regarding whether to exercise Chapter sixty-one, a right of first refusal where the purchase of the property located at Assessor's Map eighteen, block one, lot two B, which is the corner of Barstow and Montgomery Streets. Harold B. Card is the owner, so Mr. Card has requested that his land come out of chapter land. Um, and in doing so, it triggers the right of first refusal for the town, whether the town wants to purchase this property or not. Typically, when these come around, the Board of Selectmen, as part of their guidance in deciding these matters, will ask for recommendations by the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and the Open Space Committee. Um, I believe we've received all those, all of us have received all those memos. Excuse me. All three of these committees, all three of these groups, committees, boards have recommended not to purchase by right of first refusal this, this, this property. I do know that there is some calculation of rollback taxes, whatever. And then there's work for the assessors to do after that. But right now, there, does anyone wanna bring anything up about discussing this property? Tonight, this vote is just for us to decide whether the town, and if we decide that the town should be purchasing this property for open space or for whatever reason, then we just can't do that either. It would have to go to town meeting, so, and be approved at town meeting, so. I don't know if I'll open the floor. I know there's a few people here to speak about this. If the Selectmen don't wanna say anything right now, the other Selectmen, then I believe Mr. Bob Marshall is here to speak on this.
Yes, I, as I said just a little while ago, I, I learned a great deal about how the beta, the beta report information might be of help and I, on this topic, and I guess what I would ask this board to do, not that you haven't already, but as we move forward, given all the impact of climate change and the, the increase in the, the heavy rainstorms that we've had, my point is that Barstow Street has had some significant flooding over the years. And of course, the word significant is a relative term. But I, I've lived here about forty-eight years now, and I've seen water come from the back property behind me, all the way down to the end of the street, where this land that we're discussing tonight is the plan is, is made for a building there. And I guess what I'm asking you to do is, to the extent that you're able, is to really take a strong look at all of the drainage plans for this property. I have seen drainage problems at the end of the street at, on or near twenty-four Barstow Street near where it meets Montgomery, especially during the wintertime, and it freezes up and it creates icing. Though, the house next to me, I'm at sixteen, the house next to me at eighteen, used to be an empty lot years ago, and the water used to flow right across it into the, what used to be woods, and now there's a house there. And fifteen, twenty years ago, the culvert at the end of the street had to be rebuilt, restructured, improved, whatever you will, so that the water would flow properly into the ditch across the street, down Montgomery Street. And then, uh, right in front of eleven Barstow Street, the water that used to come across there, there was a, a catch basin that had to be built and, and so forth. So what I'm saying is, we already have some drainage issues, and I, I brought this to the attention of the zoning board of appeals, oh heck, I don't know, a year or two ago, whenever it was, they did not seem to take that into consideration. I brought it up to the planning board. They didn't seem to take it into consideration or decided it wasn't uh, appropriate or, or that they, it was that big an issue. And, uh, so I'm, I'm bringing it up here. As we go forward and, you know, by building permits and so forth, and we expect property and, and so forth, I'm just asking if we can keep some of the information that Emily mentioned in her beta report a little while ago, sort of a little more current, so that we can keep an eye on the drainage plans and see, number one, are they adequate in the first place? And number two, once, once they're built, uh, well, are, do they meet what the plans say? And will they prevent the flow of water onto our Barstow Street properties? So that's really, that's the big reason why I'm here tonight.
Okay, so that's a, a much further. Right now, this is for just one small piece of this property.
But that's a twenty-four also, Leah, that, which, which has been an issue.
Okay. Um, so, is, do you have any? I, I understand, you know, what you're saying about the drainage. But right now, I think what's before us is just whether the town believes it, and we speak for the town, of course, whether the town feels as though we should be buying this particular piece of land. So. Um. Does anyone on the Board of Selectmen wanna make a motion or not?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Based on all of the input provided by the other boards, having reviewed this property, and that based on their recommendation, I will support the recommendation and make a motion that the Board of Selectmen not exercise their, the town's right of first refusal to purchase the property identified on the Lakeville Assessor's Map eighteen, block one, lot two B, which is the property located on the corner of Barstow and Montgomery Street.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, um, any other discussion on this?
Um, can I just interject real quickly? I don't wanna take up too much of your time. My name is Melissa Rue. I actually reside at twenty-four Barstow Street. I just wanna kind of make it like public knowledge, per se, that I have sought legal counsel on this piece of property. There is a, a very large section that actually runs into my backyard that after purchasing the property, I realize does not belong to me. So I have sought legal counsel to try to take a piece of that property via adverse possession. Um, so that is definitely gonna change the lot, you know, dimensions, if I, if I do succeed in this, in this legal counsel. So that will definitely change, obviously, the the diameter of, uh, what do you call it? The front yard diameter necessary to, to be able to build on that property.
Yeah, the frontage.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so, we've been given all this information, and we can only, you know, I appreciate that you folks came out. Bob's, you know, point about drainage, we can share with any other boards that are responsible for making those decisions, and I do appreciate the information that you've given us. Uh, but at this time, we have a motion and a second on the town's right of first refusal, and I know from, from my perspective, from where I sit, I rely very heavily too sometimes on the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, Open Space Committee. There's folks that are really dedicated that serve on those boards, and they, a lot of them too have some, you know, professional and unprof, not, not work career related, but really good experiences that, you know, compels them to be on those boards, and I, I've learned a lot from them, so. And going forward, I'm not real sure, you know, but right now, this is the question in front of us, so. Um, I do appreciate that we know all that information, but if there's any other, any other discussion, Ari, anything from you on this, or?
No, ma'am.
Okay, um, all right, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of Lorraine's motion not to, uh, buy the property by first, right of first refusal. All those in favor of that motion?
Carboni, aye?
Camera, aye.
Fabian, aye. All right, so we will not exercise that right. Um, and we will share, of course, all that information with related boards.
Great, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Could, I, I'm assuming you would also share it with, uh, the Building Commissioner and, and
Yep.
I'm not exactly sure how building permits get, get approved by whom and, and so forth, but I would assume he would be involved. You'd share it with him and, and ask him to be, make sure the plans meet the need and that what's built is what needs to have been built, et cetera.
Yep, we will do that. Yep, absolutely. Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so Agenda Item Number Nine, we've had some changes. So unless, um, I would recommend we table this article unless the board wants to have just a general conversation on hiring a town planner. If not, then we can just table this. We don't have to vote to table, right? Okay.
You just need a motion to table from, from one of your members, and it's non-debatable.
All right, I, I move that we table Agenda Item Number Nine. Period. Okay.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, aye?
The camera, aye.
Fabian, aye. Sorry, I'm making notes as I'm talking here. Um, Agenda Item Number Ten, before you, we have the calendar, the, uh, annual calendar for twenty-twenty-two, not the fiscal year. Holidays for the year twenty-twenty-two. Um. Any questions? If there's no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the holidays as they appear.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, aye?
The camera, aye.
Fabian, aye. Uh, next, Agenda Item Number Eleven, we have minutes of October twelfth. Um. I think this was the meeting that you weren't here at, Lorraine, is that correct?
No, I was here.
Were you, where?
I was here. I was just gonna make a, a recommendation to Tracy to please add that I was here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you, yeah, you, you were at this one, yes.
Yeah. Um. So, if we could, I will entertain a motion to approve these minutes with the correction of adding Selectman Carboni into the attendance paragraph.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry. Tracy, Tracy does have, uh, Lorraine, you in, in the motions, so I think it was just the carryover from the prior one when you weren't there at the header, that's all.
Yeah, yep.
She typically does.
Yeah.
Have me there.
Okay. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, aye?
The camera, aye.
And Fabian, aye? All right. Agenda Item Number Twelve, new business. Any new business?
Madam Chair, I do have one thing, actually a couple of things I'd like to bring up with the board. I know we've talked about affordable senior housing, that it's important, you know, in Lakeville, and I was hoping that we could start getting the ball rolling on this direction, I guess. I didn't really have any information to bring forward today, other than the fact that uh, I see maybe a small group of, of individuals getting together to kind of scope this out, check the viability of it, the options, can we do it through a bylaw amendment versus, you know, under forty-B, you know, do a higher level density, you know, affordable housing? I did check in with, um, town council briefly to talk about land use, and they did indicate that there would be opportunity to do something with it, within our bylaw to accommodate affordable senior housing with age restriction, and maybe even include a new homeowner.
What, I'm sorry, what did you just say? Um, you said with what, something restriction?
Oh, age restriction.
Ah, okay.
Right. And, and maybe even cater the new homeowner, first-time homeowner. So, a town council said that they did have, uh, some language in other communities that has worked for them, and I thought we could bring that here. And I was just thinking that if we did have a small committee to just, you know, kind of scope it out, report back to the, the Board of Selectmen with some options, so that we can, you know, maybe put something together here in Lakeville. I wanted to get the discussion going.
Okay. Um. Any idea how you'd want to try to work it, or work through, work with it, work with Ari through this, or actually, you know, look to put a committee together?
I mean, if we did, if we did do something a little bit more formal, we'd have to have a charge, we'd have to establish a subcommittee, and they would obviously have to follow the, you know, the rules of open meeting law and so forth, and, and it would be a, a committee on the books. I'm not opposed to that either. I was more, you know, looking on fact-finding. I don't have all the answers. I have the idea of, of putting together affordable senior housing here in Lakeville. I know it's needed, I know it's wanted, I know, you know, we've kind of touched upon it a little bit, but I don't know how to really go about making that happen where it is a viable option here in Lakeville, if it's something that we drove. So we do have property that we own as a town. How do we utilize that property? We do have the CPA on the docket right now for town meeting. There's opportunity in there that might be able to help the process. I'm not really, you know, too up on that piece of it, but I know that it's kind of all tied in together.
Yep.
So, I'm So I'm only one person. I only know so much. I see the idea. I see. Something coming to fruition. I just don't know really the steps and how to get there. So that's why I would like to. Put together, you know, some kind of a small just group for fact finding mission and report back to the board.
Okay. Any comment, Rich?
I guess one of the comments would be, are you talking about using town-owned land?
It's a, I want to keep it on the table.
Okay, have you identified any areas that you're talking about?
Same, as I just said, Rich, I haven't done anything other than just bring this to the board. To see if that is even a viable option to utilize town on property. I mean, we might have town on property, but it might not be. In an area that we could actually. To have, you know, take on this initiative. So. I don't know. This is something that we would have to look at. We'd have to look at the land, you know, how we would go about. You know, working the bylaw. How did maybe some of the other towns do it? How were they successful? Were they able to put age restriction through their bylaws? You know, is it septic? Is it, you know, there's infrastructure money out there through the Commonwealth and for housing.
I'm always willing to hear ideas, but I guess I would say maybe. You and Ari or, you know, through Ari somehow, maybe. You guys could, you know, work with council. And I don't know, talk to some of the. You know, folks that sit on some of the other boards that may know some of this stuff. But I mean, I'm willing, yeah, I'm willing to listen to, you know, like you said, some facts. And, you know, see if it's something that applies for us.
All right, well, I mean, it's not going to be, you know, it wouldn't be any, if I have the board's blessing, then, you know, I will, you know, eat with Ari and. And, you know, try to get something going and then be able to report back to this. To the Board of Selectmen. I'll give an update every meeting.
Yeah.
I just got another question. Are you asking the town to build these affordable units?
No, it again, it's, I wouldn't be asking anything at this point. This is just completely exploratory. So I I'm sorry, I don't have the answers because, you know, I'm just seeing affordable housing. How do we get there? And, you know, what's the best route that we can take to make this happen? So not no decisions would be made. It would just be fact finding right now and reporting back to the board on what we found.
Yeah, because a couple of people have asked me about that part of the CPA. So, you know, there is questions that need to be answered. So. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I always want to take a look at information. So, yeah, yep.
All right. All right, Ari, I'll be I'll be reaching out to you. Try to schedule a few minutes.
All right, did you have something else too?
Oh, I did. I did. I know we've already gone through the list of committees that this the Board of Selectmen sit on, but I also know that. Sometimes we're liaisons to other projects that are going on in town. And that, you know, we haven't really had many report outs of of what's been going on with regards to those liaisons. So I'm I'm hoping that. We can at least have a list of put together. I mean, I understand, you know. I was talking to the owner of Lakeville Country Club and they mentioned that they had a meeting. With the potential developer with Ari and Rich.
Yeah.
And I believe Nate was there and I was just surprised that we weren't getting an update on that as. You know, the Lakeville Country Club has been kind of a topic of discussion, but I'm just curious as to who the liaisons are to some of these projects.
Okay, well, I mean, we can. I think we updated some of those when we updated. Some of the other committee things in July, maybe. A lot of them we do after the election in April, but we can get an updated list and.
Yeah, it just were.
Yeah, for example, yeah, one of the ones that I'm on is the. The train. The MBTA stuff, we, there was actually a couple of meetings for other parts of what they do, and then there's one like in November. So I'm going to try to, you know, right have, it's literally like right before. I think our November meeting, so I'm going to, you know, attend that and then hopefully be able to give an update to the board. Is that the kind of thing that you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. And Rich, you know, I know you've had that opportunity to, you know, to kind of meet and talk about the Lakeville Country Club. Just. You know, it it's really good for us, the board, so that we're all tied in together and kind of know what's going on within the town. I mean, again, this is a public meeting. Information people are always questioning, you know, some of the discussions that are happening, and I just think this is the best venue for us. To keep that information going, flowing and available to the to the public about what is happening.
And I was the Board of Selectmen's representative to for the Lakeville Country Club. That was a that was done a long, long time ago.
Oh, okay. So that was before I came on too.
Yep.
Okay, so you're the rep for that.
Yeah.
Okay, and.
I would note, just for the record, that I do occasionally, you know, get inquiries directly from. You know, developers or turn representatives about this project or that project, and we're always happy to arrange a just a formal sit down just to say, yeah, this. You know, there's some kind of initial indication, nothing official from the town is whether this looks like something that would be viable within, you know, meat meat zoning and so on. And if they ask, I'll arrange a meeting with Nate and so on, and we'll just sit down and have a very informal discussion. Nothing comes of them in terms of actual product, you know.
Right, because most of that stuff will actually come before the planning board. You know, whether it's through conceptual design and, you know, and I know people like to feel things out and say, hey, this is an idea that we have. Do you think it would be viable?
All right, I want to be receptive. I want to be helpful. So I don't, but I don't give any kind of guidance or anything in those situations.
Right, and you can direct them to the bylaws and whoever else they might need to speak to, which is great.
Absolutely.
There are any, you know, like ongoing projects, you know, like we have a status of, you know, Route seventy-nine. Or. The the South Coast Rail, like these are things that are, they're still, they're projects that are still happening. And maybe it's a quick update that we say there's really no update.
Yeah.
Yep. You know what? We can look at the. The liaison list there, though, and just make sure it's all up to date and we haven't missed anything or.
Okay.
Missed changing something that should that should be changed. We can, we can start by looking there too.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yep, anything else? Rich, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, I do know that the only thing I'll mention is that. Litter lifters has been rejuvenated and I know Alicia Breadberg. She's been posting most of the dates and times that they're doing. Litter lifting on Lakeville, helping Lakeville. I'm not sure if she's sending it to the town. She is working through the DPW, but they've done at least two or three. Dates so far, so I'm trying to work with her to get some information, but they've had, actually, we have a big. Exchange student community in this area, and they've had a lot of exchange students come out and help with. Some of that work and some younger kids and kids can get, the high school kids can get community service hours that they may need for. Scholarships or National Honor Society. But they've rejuvenated that program, so I'll try to get us some more information on that next time. But if anyone wants to be involved with. You know, cleaning up the streets with a group of folks, they give you the little. Fork thing, whatever that is, and a vest, you can actually contact me right now and I'll be able to, I'll be happy to hook people up with Alicia. Otherwise, I don't think there's any other new business. Anybody?
Okay.
Old business, anything under old business? Any other business that can come before the selectmen? Well, all right. If that's the case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Carboni, aye?
The camera, aye.
Fabian, aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Tracy.